Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Limington Select Board Meeting for October 9th, 2025. We will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 2nd.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from October 2nd.
I will abstain.
I will second. Welcome back, David.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Thank you. Now we will go to the approval of warrants for week 41. Payroll warrants number 87 and 89 for a total of $28,747.63 and appropriations warrant number 88, $50,272.41 for a total of warrants 87, 88, and 89 for $79,020.4.
I think a motion that we accept payroll warrant 87, 89, and appropriations warrant 88.
I will second your motion.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. From the office hours, the board further discussed hosting a meeting with representatives from all towns utilizing Saukapi Rescue to discuss ways to improve that service. Do you guys want to talk anything about that at all or just pretty straightforward?
Yeah, compromising or compiling an invitation. We'll host it here with all the towns and just try to... It's, you know, when you start figuring the numbers in of the amount of people, which I think is, you know, was 15,000 plus in 2020. Now it's a lot more. And the amount of actual rescue crews that are on, which I think full-time wise, I think there's maybe four full-time crews that cover that 300 and some odd miles of multiple towns. It's...
Oh, three full-time ambulances.
Yeah, it's not much for a lot of space. So it's just something we wanted to get together and speak on.
Excellent.
The chief is putting that together.
Okay. The board discussed an offer that the town received about purchasing a 3.85 acre lot across from the elementary school. That just came into the office this week, the offer. The board welcomes residents to attend office hours or televised meetings to express their thoughts on such a purchase. We thought that before we went back to say yes or no, we would ask the townspeople if they would be interested in spending their money, tax money, on purchasing this lot. So we welcome...
Next couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, we welcome people's opinions on that matter. One thing to note is that next Monday is a holiday. October 13th is Columbus Day, and so the town hall will be closed. The town office and the town manager office will be closed. So also, the town clerk wanted us to say that there are absentee ballots that are available now for the November 4th election. I think there's two referendum questions only. There's nobody's getting voted in for anything. So it's simply two referendum questions. I don't know why I can't say that quickly. So absentee ballots are available here at the town clerk office. So I'll let people know that.
I spoke briefly with the town's attorney in reference to the solar farm that's moving forward. We have to have a performance bond and/or a credit line from a bank. So we're dealing with that now because the solar farm wants to move forward.
Okay.
Just waiting to hear back.
You want to say that?
What is this? Just the application?
Yes, the application for it, yeah.
So a message from SAD 6 Budget Advisory Committee seeking volunteers. Excuse me. If you're interested in learning about and having input in the development of the 2026-27 Bonnie Eagle School District Budget, the Budget Advisory Committee is seeking citizen volunteers. The BAC is an advisory group established by the school board to review budget information and make recommendations to the district budget committee and the school board. If you have any questions, please contact, is it Iva Davenport? At 207-929-2318, or I Davenport at bonnieeagle.org. To register, please complete the budget advisory application. That can be found at the district website. We also have a copy here at the municipal complex. Applications must be returned by Friday, October 31st, 2025. So they're seeking volunteers for the Budget Advisory Committee.
Return by when? October?
Uh, return by October 31st, 2025. It's a Friday.
I'll give this to Patty and maybe we could put this on the town website and then people can download it and fill it out if they want, or if they want to come to the town hall, they can do that as well. So if you want to have a say in how the budget is formed for SAD 6, that'd be a great opportunity to get a lot of great information and to have a say.
I actually forwarded that to Patty early today, so it should be maybe on the website already.
All right. Oh, thank you, Matt. Thank you.
What's up?
That's going to be on the website as well.
Main DOT Notice of Preliminary On-Demand Public Meeting, Limington, to discuss the bridge replacement of Webster's Mill Bridge number 2918 over Webster Mill Pond located .15 of a mile north of Route 25. So the main DOT invites and encourages you to attend an on-demand public meeting to provide information about the proposed project. This can be viewed at any time during the formal comment period and allows for online comments and questions that will be answered by main DOT staff. The formal comment period will last from October 8th, 2025 through October 29th, 2025. Questions, comments, or inquiries can be made at the on-demand meeting or directed to the project manager below, which we have here. If they need it or you want me to read it out?
It's on the website too.
It's on the website also. Access to this and all other active meeting presentations is available on the public meetings page located at bit.ly/main-meetings. You can also access those meetings using the QR code which we have here. I'm sure we can post it somewhere here in the building. For more information regarding main DOT public involvement, including meetings, accessibility, and available accommodations you may request for all types of meetings, please see the link below to our background information page.
Thank you. That's otherwise known as the Mill Pond. That's out behind sleepers going towards steep falls.
Yep.
So they're asking for public input. It's going to be quite a lengthy process. They're not going to even start it until 2027.
Twenty-seven.
So the comments and the planning part is going to be taking place throughout next year. So just to let people know that they have a chance to give their input there as well for the public comment section. It's open now for the next three weeks. So that will be on the website as well. So you'll be able to see what they're planning on doing and let them and ask any questions on the project. So. We have an email from the office about the "It Takes a Village." It's going to be, oh, "It Takes a Village 207 and Maine Homeless Veterans Alliance" to confirm their upcoming trunk-or-treat event on Saturday, October 19th from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Limington Harmon Airport. So that is coming up just before Thanksgiving, trunk-or-treat. The parking will take place on the land between the kitchen and the main building. No parking will occur on the taxiways or runways. And they have 10 adult volunteers who'll be wearing neon colors and assisting with parking and have insurance for this event. So again, a trunk-or-treat event Saturday, October 19th from 1:00 to 4:00.
Department updates? Department updates? Got any more?
No, we can do the department updates before the town manager weekly.
Okay, whatever. Okay.
All right.
Yeah. You want me to read them?
Sure, please.
Code enforcement, weekend ending 10/9. Two growth permits, six building permits, seven electrical permits, five plumbing permits, one shore land, one occupancy permit. Looks like the fees, nothing was added up here. Year-to-date, 332 permits, and total year-to-date so far is $112,510.82. Craig was on 35 inspections in the last three weeks, went on one site walk on Monday, 10/6 with the planning board. Parks and Rec, before and after care, childcare at HBMRE, our current program, pickleball, open play Tuesday, Friday nights at HBMRE, coffee social Wednesdays at the Old Town Hall from 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM, and fall youth soccer. Open registrations, register online at limingtonrec.com. Before and after care child programs, 25, 26 school year at HBMRE. Please call Jamie Warden with any questions about the program, 298-0869. More information and registration are available on the website. Fall Craft Fair, yard sale, and young entrepreneur market at the Old Town Hall is on October 18th from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. Reserve your spot online at limingtonmainrec, limingtonrec.com, sorry. We are taking fall foliage cruise on Lake Winnipesaukee aboard the MS Mount Washington with our friends at Hollis Parks and Rec. Trip is $65 for the transportation to and from and your ticket to the cruise. You can pack a lunch to bring with you, or you can purchase one on the cruise. Reach out to Madison to reserve your spot or go online. Read out to Madison. Winter basketball registration for girls and boys in 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade is open. Their season will start in December and go until March. More information to come for the 1st and 2nd grade basketball. Registration and find further information about all programs at limingtonrec.com. Other events, trunk-or-treat will be Saturday, October 25th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. This year, we are holding the event at Blake Memorial Field. Trunks will be lined up on the front of the field against Route 11 with parking down South Road and in Field 3 at the back of the ballfields. Please reach out to Madison if you would like to have a trunk at the event. They are currently pressure washing and prepping Old Town Hall with all the exterior windows trimmed to be painted. We also are gathering quotes for a second bathroom and kitchenette area on the first floor. Information to come soon about Festival of Tree event and Breakfast with Santa at Old Town Hall.
Oh, please don't. No.
What?
That's December.
Yeah, that's coming.
It'll be here and gone. Oh, my word, that's sad when you start talking about those things.
It is. It felt like winter today.
Yes.
Limington Fire and EMS Weekly Report for weekend ending October 4th. Service this week, 12 calls, month-to-date, 63. That was ending September and 10 in October. Year-to-date, 582 fires, five fires and seven EMS calls. There were two shifts vacated this week. Portions of those shifts were covered by other members. No calls were sent to mutual aid during the vacant times. Wednesday night, crews started prepping for the station for the upcoming open house. Facilities, the new door locks were installed and are now functioning. Engine 2 was out of service again for the same stalling issue. Special notes, month-to-date, we are four calls behind September of 2024, and October is equal to last year. Year-to-date, we are five calls behind last year. There were three requests for mutual aid, one EMS, one fire to Standish, and one EMS to Saukapi. Public Works, from the road crew. Road crews spent Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday working along Boothby Road doing roadside mulching. Thursday, Friday were spent at the shop prepping the new truck for wrap and stating, starting, calibrating the standards for winter. You hear that?
I don't know. No.
La 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 la.
Buildings and grounds, mowed the transfer station, worked an old town hall basement and plumbing hot water to the bathroom. Traveled to Lowe's for supplies, assisted rec director getting their rec truck to and from the shop for undercoating. Worked on the soccer fields at Blake Memorial Field. And Emil, the director, was off for the week, enjoying the fair. So.
Okay, excellent. Now we'll go to the town manager updates.
All right, payroll and accounts payable were completed on time. I've continued budget discussions with the department heads. I've started investigating new IT service providers for the town. I spoke with MMA about a few legal matters. I started prepping for the 2024 audit. To help improve communication between the municipal offices and residents, I plan to talk with our website provider about making the website more user-friendly. And I also plan to create a town Facebook page to post town updates. And we've had a few people inquire about the open DPW position.
Yes. Yeah, one thing that we learned when we spoke for two weeks in a row on the town office being closed that Thursday and Friday of last week, and put it in the shopper's guide, spoke about it here, and people still showed up to find out that they didn't know that it was closed. So we talked a little bit about putting things like that on the Limington, right now, the Limington Community Facebook page, because everybody seems to go there and see what's going on. So might be a little bit, not just to include it, not to be the only thing, but to continue what we're doing, but also put it there, because it seems like it gets an awful lot more traffic.
I think Matt had decided, we're going to have an actual Limington, Town of Limington Facebook page. It'll be informational only, no comments, no nothing. It's just, you know, so you can subscribe to it or, you know, follow it. That way anytime it's posted, everybody will get a ding, so.
So we thought that just this time we'd put out, you know, about maybe the land being up for sale and Monday being closed, just this time until we get our website up and running, just to be able to get information out there. There won't be any comments on that. It'll be turned off, but just information only for now. So yes. And there is a open Department of Public Works position, and that is in the shopper's guide this week. So. Here is where we open it up for a public comment. If anyone would like to speak now?
Good evening. Jason Swanson, 7 Evergreen Circle, Airport of Butter. So probably know I'm going to ask some questions about the concert. Do you know of the final count of the concert goers at this event? That's unfortunate. How many was expected?
I really don't know. I heard 12 to 15.
12 to 15 hundred, okay. Okay. There's been a lot of talk, 3,000 was put out by the airport manager, at least on Facebook, was part of his, was his count at least. Just curious, how do we think it went?
Well, I'll speak fully on my behalf only. Yeah, no, I was there. I was there from noon to 5:30. I thought it went well. I spoke with Kyle directly. There was some parking issues, you know, that just, it's a lot, that, you know, it was a very quick put together, you know, so it just, it wasn't a mess, but it took a lot of people time to park, you know. I heard people sparking about 45 minutes to park. Other than that, inside, everything went, seemed to move freely. No real issues. I didn't stay there late. I spoke with the event, I spoke with Daniel on a number of occasions throughout the day, as I did with the abutting in the kitchen, and I spoke, I saw, I saw you at the... Spoke to him a couple of times. I spoke to, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Jack.
Jen. I spoke to him at the kitchen. So overall, I thought it was pretty good. There was really no... It was cool. It was very cool to see a lot of families, and there was a lot of kids there. Just overall, I was, I was pretty impressed. I didn't know, I think, like everybody else, I didn't know how it was going to go.
Yeah.
And I thought it went well.
Sure, sure. You're involved in public safety and two of you on the board are. From a public safety standpoint, what are your thoughts?
Well, there wasn't a single call.
Yeah.
There was no traffic issues, which was surprising, because I thought there would be some type of congestion. There really wasn't. Yeah, I, as a public safety side of it, I really didn't see a lot of issues, you know. Everything was spaced out. It's not like everybody was crammed, you know. It's not like anybody was getting trampled on. The idea of they had seats, bring your own seats, people were spaced out quite well. Yeah, I mean, going forward, we've been, I know the planning board's been reviewing a lot of different materials to come forth and present us with a, with a form of ordinance to go forward with. So I know they're doing their diligence and they'll be looking into, you know, questions going forward.
Sure, sure. Did any local Limington businesses profit at all from this? Any vendors locally?
I don't believe so, other than, because a lot of the stuff is free giveaways. I know Sanford Sound's not local, but they were giving away, you know, car starters to the Best Line Dancer, you know, that type of stuff. They were giving out, I know Mr. Couture, the pumping trucks were there. They were giving out a bunch of free stuff. There was, I think it was just a lot of giveaways. Obviously, the food vendors, the food trucks definitely made some money.
Yeah.
And the beer garden.
Sure, sure, but no local, no local businesses profited from this?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And the town didn't?
No, no, we had no.
For any permits or anything of that nature?
What's up?
The town didn't profit from it, from any permits or anything like that?
No, we didn't even get it, yeah. We didn't, you know, yeah, we did, there is, I do believe, I spoke with Craig this morning. There was the violation on the, the electrical permit that was an oversight on Kyle's part, and he's paying the permit fee and the violation fee. So.
Okay. So it sounds to me like the town really got nothing in return for this, the biggest event that's happened in Limington.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, on a private parcel of land of a private property owner, I mean, we really don't, you know. It's, we weren't looking for that if it's a town owned. We've already discussed, as far, and I'll bring up earlier today, I was meeting with a couple others discussing the use of out back here going forward. I know I had discussed with him as well that why don't we, you know, it's been questioned, why don't we use our property for that?
Yeah.
And, and we took a good look into the, because we have a pretty good chunk of land out back here. So it's something that going forward, we will be looking into as well.
Perfect. That leads me right into my next, next little line item here.
Out back of the third ball field out here that we own, where the field is. It was just an initial chat with Madison this morning, because he was questioning expanding the soccer fields. And then it would be also a multi-use for the town as well, so.
Sounds good. Cost to the town to expand?
Don't know yet. He's going to look at it, because there's trees that need to be removed, and it could be in the cost of the trees being removed for the initial cost of clearing it. So. But it's something that we just spoke about this morning. It hasn't even come to you yet. So.
So I guess at this, at this event, like we said, the town and businesses in the town really didn't get anything. However, by leaving the runway open, and airplanes going up and down the runway while cars were parked next to it, people were on the runway, I think the town did actually burden a lot of risk. They took on a whole lot of risk by allowing this to happen, or by allowing this event to be permitted. And with whatever plan was put together, there were three airplanes that took off and landed, basically turning that runway into a drag strip race. I doubt any one of the concert goers knew that that runway was open until they saw an airplane. I believe that was absolutely reckless. I've never seen anything at an airport that, that irresponsible. And I guess my point is, is that airports are built on space for a reason, especially when an active runway is going on, or when airplanes are taking off and landing. They're built on space because years, decades of crash data shows that airplanes do crash from time to time. Airplanes don't tend to crash on a runway. They crash on the side of a runway. Looked back, there's 10 accidents that have happened at the Limington Airport, as far back as you can look at, three of which were fatal. The pilots or occupants of the airplanes passed away in those three. But in most of those cases, the airplanes departed the runway, crashed on the side, crashed into the trees off the side, but nobody crashed on the runway. That's why they're made on space. And I guess that's my point. He's going to shut down the runway and park cars there. It makes sense. That's safe. This was not safe, not in the slightest bit. And I don't think anybody had any idea, as a concert goer, the risk they were put into. So in the words of my six-year-old, I'll stop at this, but you can have concerts in a lot of places, but you can only take off and land an airplane safely at an airport. They're made for it, but only when there's space. Thank you.
So originally, if I remember correctly, the airport was supposed to be closed and was left open because of the abutters?
Yeah, that was...
And it was moved from the runway to the grassy area?
The end of the day, it's an FAA and a Mr. Starkweather problem, not a problem, but it's their decision, guided by attorneys, and the town had no jurisdiction over it, like I've said before. And going forward, when we have an ordinance, it'll be a town-wide ordinance, not geared for an airport. So at that point in time, I don't know if it'll affect any of the FAA laws or regulations or not, but in that case, that's where, you know, the FAA, if they have a problem, that is, that's a problem that these need, they need to take up with Mr. Starkweather, because the town doesn't own the airport. So. Yes.
My name is Tom Weed, 41, Evergreen Circle. Just to expand a little bit on what Jason was saying, there's a thing called AROFA, right? And that's a runway obstacle-free area. And that's basically what we're talking about. And he did put in notums that there was going to be what they call a work in progress on the north side of the runway. And, but the problem is, since the runway was still open, let's put it this way, if I was flying my plane and I was coming back from somewhere and I saw all those cars, it was 90% of that runway, the cars were about anywhere from six to eight feet from the edge of the runway. That's not a safety zone at all, you know.
So the FAA runway safety area object-free zone allegations. These provisions allow, apply for only FAA obligated airports, meaning airports that have received and accepted federal grant funding under the Airport Improvement Program, API, AIP. Limington Harmon Airport has never accepted FAA funds and is therefore not subject to mandatory RSA or OFZ design standards. Nevertheless, in good faith, Mr. Starkweather volunteered, voluntarily followed FAA recommended safety practices, issued formal notums through Bangor Flight Service Stations warning of temporary surface restrictions and event activity. These notums are a matter of public record and confirm that the FAA was notified, consulted, and had no obligation. Any claim that Starkweather Airport violated federal standards is false, misleading, and defamation. What I'm going to go here before I let you continue. I have been advised that we are, if you want to speak about the airport, that's great. At this point in time, nothing can be said, stated, deforming, or going against Mr. Starkweather or allegations towards, because we have been advised by counsel that there is proceedings further and more than this.
Just to let you know, the FAA does, they look at all airports, especially ones that are open to the public, public use airports like this one. So there are guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going... Yeah, I mean, I'm just going by, they were notified, and I'm being told they were notified and had, if they had objections, I'm sure they would have probably immediately told him no or shut it down. So.
Well, we had objections and as a matter of fact, you know, I file, I have filed with the FAA right before I came, I came here, actually. As, as, you know, as a problem, this thing has a problem because it, you know what it is, is if you left the runway open the way it was, but you found an alternate place to park those cars, you know, I know that wouldn't, would not be easy, then it wouldn't have been a problem. But, you know, the fact that they were like eight feet from the edge of a runway, and things happen, you know, when you're landing a plane, you know, as you, as Jason was talking about with, uh, those, those ten cases, you know, over, over the years. And it doesn't happen, you know, that often, but it does happen. And if you hit something with a plane, you hit a car, let's face it, these planes, they're, you know, they have to be light for a reason.
Yeah.
And they break up pretty bad. And, and that's, that's, that's basically what hap- happened. That happened to this guy named, I wish, I don't know his last name, Tony about seven or eight years ago. You know, he slammed into a pile of debris. The, uh, his family sued. The insurance company had to pay out, you know, quite a bit because that debris never should have been there, you know? And so I know he filed the notums, but, you know.
And you, just to, to verify, I'm just doing.
Yeah, yeah.
My, you know, at, at the end of the day, I just want you guys to know, I'm, I'm doing what I can. I, we're, we're not, other than, uh, getting an ordinance together, which is the planning board now, we have no, we had or have no jurisdiction. Moving forward, there will be a lot more clarity as, as we go forward. But as far as what's happened, you know, I, I can't comment on it and, and I've all, we've been.
I mean, just thank goodness, nothing, nothing.
Right, right.
Nothing bad happens.
You know, I was there, I saw the planes take off.
Yeah.
I saw the, the first red one come in.
Yep.
And then I believe one of the abutters took off and landed. The blue and white one left from there and then returned there. So it had to have been somebody that was, had a hangar, had an airplane on site.
Yes.
So, and then the, the red barren one left and did a flyover with the smoke.
Yeah.
So.
And he was flying actually below the altitude he should have while he did that, as he flew over the crowd. You know, so anyway, but it is true. It's all, you know, it's all FAA stuff.
Right, and I personally, as I've told you, I don't know anything about planes. I really don't.
Yeah.
And the only reason why I wrote that is because that was sent to me.
Yeah.
By, by attorney, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody, yeah. How you doing?
Fine, thank you, and yourself?
Can't complain.
Okay, uh, just one thing before I can go with my, I guess you say, my question.
Can you just state, state your name?
Oh, yes, uh, John Gallipole.
Yep.
Tucker Road.
Just for the people watching.
Okay. As regards to the activity that happened this past weekend, uh, is there any way the town could put a moratorium on any mass gatherings until this is straightened out through an ordinance and referendum or whatever? Just put everything on hold?
I, I mean, I don't know what we consider mass gathering, anything over five hundred.
Sure, anything over five hundred. Or how many, how many, yes.
I, I don't know if we can.
But no, that's a question to a few.
You know, I, we can look into that. I, I don't, I mean, I don't foresee any big events.
No, but if he's planning another one, let's say in the spring or whatever, and this hasn't been ironed out yet, I don't want to have to go through this. I'd like to have everything all basically cut and dry.
Yeah.
Well, the process with the planning board's already started, so I don't think.
The planning board passes a buck to you, you pass a buck to them. You guys don't get along, do you do?
No, we love the planning board. I back the planning board.
I can really tell.
No, I do. But there is, there's, there's a form of doing this.
Like you mentioned this deal about the solar farm.
Yep.
How come I, we didn't hear anything about that with the planning board?
Because it happened two years ago?
Is this one down here on one seventeen going out?
That one's been sold and now is gonna be revamped again, correct? Yep.
Has another solar farm?
What's that?
Has another solar farm?
Uh, that actually was on the planning board, uh, two months ago.
Okay.
They were back in stating that they had purchased and the rear is restarting the solar farm, but this is another, another one that's going in.
So they have to go through the re-permitting process again?
Yep, because they have a two, I don't, I'm not good with the logistics. I think it's a two-year permit.
But that's supposed to be with the original permit applicant, not passed on.
From what I gathered, it's still the, it's still the original applicant. It's just, it's, it's, they ran into fundage issues and then
Okay.
They regrouped, so, because I did ask Craig about it.
Okay, okay. Uh, my question basically is with the, uh, I guess you could say the town budget. Okay, as we all know, uh, the kids in the town, you know, they're getting free breakfast, free lunch at school. They get free backpacks at school, with school supplies, winter coat drive, Christmas toy drive. Why? Because they're poor families. Then you have families with heating assistance, rent assistance, food pantries, government food, assistant programs throughout the town. And, you know, there are other programs available for the elderly people, et cetera, to help them make ends meet. So, the total population of the town, which was a twenty-twenty-five estimate, is around forty-one hundred people, of which over, just slightly over a thousand or over sixty-five. So we do have a elderly population in town. Money is tight, money is scarce. So now we come down to the gist of it, this COLA, which is a cost of living allowance. And I will go back to, let's say, twenty eighteen, and I'll use that as the benchmark. From twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, the town budget increased twelve point nine two percent. COLA was one point six. Twenty twenty, town budget increased nine point seven three. COLA, one point three. Twenty twenty-one, the town increased six point eight four, COLA, five point nine. Twenty twenty-two, few things, major things happened, and cost of living was eight point seven. But the town budget increased forty-two point seven. In twenty twenty-three, the town budget increased ten point two seven. COLA was three point two. In twenty twenty-four, the town budget increased another ten point eight five percent. And COLA is two point five percent. So you can see the poor citizens in this town are taking a wallop, big time. And the town of Leamington seems to think that their money or our money, the taxpayers, belong to them. So what I'm proposing is to have the budget capped, yearly budget capped at the prior COLA or cost of living adjustment. So which means next year, you could only get two point five percent more money than you did this year to match the COLA adjustment, and not anymore. The town has to learn to live within its budget like we have to live within ours. If we have an engine that blows up in the car, we just don't go to the town and say, we need a new engine, you know? We have to make do. The town has to make do with what they have. And with a two point five percent increase, the various departments can work together and see how they can divvy up that pie. And so I'd like to know how to go about the procedures to make that a referendum vote, to make it law that the town stays within COLA. And that's what I'd like to know. Can you guys do it yourself, or do I have to do a petition drive and go out and collect my one-hundred-and-eighty-eight petitions, signatures?
I think the hundred-and-eighty-eight.
So there's two ways to do it. Either the board can put it as a warrant or a.
Warrant article.
A warrant article, or you can get your, your signatures.
I'd just as soon have you do it.
Yeah, I mean, so even if we did it, if the tax votes, if the taxpayers vote no, I mean, with that, I would be reluctant, to be honest. Um, we got a lot of old equipment, okay?
So learn, learn, learn how to live within your budget and learn how to maintain it.
Okay, let's only put it this way. Uh, we blow the engine in both rescues and you have a heart attack. We don't show up at your house because we don't have, we can't fix our equipment. Then what?
Then what?
Then how would you feel about that? I just.
I'd probably be dead. What would I care?
What was the increase this year? What was the increase from last year to this year?
This year, ten point.
Because I know we dropped the mill rate and everybody's taxes went down.
Right, but it's still went up two point eight percent.
I, I don't know where that number comes from, because.
It comes from the annual town budget from this year and the annual town budget last year. And all the numbers that were derived from these charts came from the very, all the town budgets from all the previous years. If you don't believe these numbers, you have access to all the town reports and prove me wrong.
The revenue was probably higher than anticipated.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, it, there's, there's, I'll do, I'll.
And if you, and like you said, if you have a problem with an engine or something that has to be replaced, whatever, that's when you have a special vote to get the special money. You just don't keep jacking up the percentage rate every year. Do you know what this chart will look like in another couple of years for the older people in this town?
So the, the new engine and the ambulance were voted on in March.
March, that's this year.
Yeah.
I'm talking about going down the road.
So previous boards, we can't speak on.
Right.
I, I was, I've been in a year and a half.
Yeah.
So the, all the previous, all I can speak of is, is that the board you're looking at lowered the tax rate. We did the best that we could and we cut as much physically out of the budget.
I'm not asking about how you cut the budget and how you jack up the mill rate and all that. What I'm asking for is to control the top, the bottom line number of what you spend.
The cost of living, you know, so inflation, what was the inflation rate this year?
I'm going by the cost of living, I'm going by the cost of living of what.
Inflation's eight point six, so what we would purchase last year is eight point six higher.
And what about the poor people out there buying food and groceries and cars and tires?
Hundred percent. I, I totally understand that, 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 when, when, two years ago in twenty-three, when the board jacked everybody's property values, a hundred percent on dwellings and fifty percent on property because they haven't done a re-evaluation in seventeen years, when your house went from two fifty to five hundred overnight and put a tax burden on everybody that lives here, including fixed incomes. I mean, this is why we're doing a re-evaluation this year. You know, we can only do so much, and I certainly encourage anybody that thinks they can do a lot better, that this, this, my chair position is open at the end of next year. Please run. Because I've gotten, I've gotten a pretty good awakening of trying to do this job, and it's not, to see people come at, like, I mean, this, like, we're just spending money radically. We're not, you know?
I'm not asking, I'm not saying you're spending money radically, I'm just saying I want the town to stay within the cost of living allowance.
So if we cut, if I cut curbside, I can save a million dollars and keep you there, but is people gonna be okay with losing their trash?
How about, uh, how about the leisure services, which last year spent four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for leisure services? That's park and recreation.
Yeah, and how much did they take in? Did, do you have that right there on the board?
No, but how much did they take in?
They, they took in, I, I, almost, I think about four hundred thousand anyways, if not a little bit more.
Okay.
So, I mean, and, and same like with code enforcement, that's, code enforcement in this town is the only one that actually breaks even or may make a little money because of permit fees.
Okay, okay. So what I'm gonna do then, is seeing that we're at a stalemate, I'll just go and collect my signatures.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
Seeing that.
And I don't, I would just, I, I don't know if it's something that we'd have to talk to the attorneys about anyways.
You should, you should.
If it can even legally be done.
It can. Because if can't, if it cannot be legally done, then we're held hostage by your decisions. And speaking of decisions, while we're at it, on the town reports, when they have the warrants up front, it always says like, uh, uh, the financial committee vote favoring yes or no, and select board favor, oppose. Uh, being two here that are on the fire and rescue, you should exempt yourself from your opinion on anything to do with the fire and rescue, because that's conflict of interest.
I was not part of that budget process and I did abstain from the March third vote.
Excuse me?
I was not part of that.
No, no, I'm saying in the future, in the future.
And I abstained from the current, the last March vote. I didn't vote.
But anyways, okay then, uh, I will see.
I haven't voted on any fire rescue stuff since I've been a board member.
So, so when do you, for the next election, which is in March, when do you have to have the information put in for the ballots, the secret ballot?
I would see Patty on that. I believe Patty would have the information.
Okay, because I'm gonna just wait for you.
She's the clerk, so she.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna wait for you to finalize after you three talk about it with the town manager about putting it on the ballot yourselves, or if I have to do it.
We're going to, um, we're gonna announce when the warrant is open, and then when the warrant is open, then, then you can submit, um, your petition.
So in other words, it's something that you don't want to submit yourselves as a plan, as the select board?
I'm not a member of the select.
No, the select board doesn't want to do it.
But I, but I'm telling you is that once the warrant is open, then you can submit.
Okay, and so when want, when would want, the warrants be open?
We don't have a date on that, but it'll, it'll be announced in, in our meetings.
Hmm.
Um, when we get closer.
I don't know what.
Yeah.
It'll be posted on Facebook. Um, yeah, there'll be plenty of notice.
Well, we're starting the budget process next month anyway.
Yeah, the budget process is really in motion right now, but, uh, we don't have a date for opening the warrant yet. Uh, but as soon as we have that, we will notify residents at these meetings and on Facebook.
Okay, well, maybe if you know that this is coming down the pike, you can jack up next rates, next year a rate twenty percent to cover for the following year.
We're not presenting the budget. Matt is, so.
The budget process is gonna be new this year.
Yeah, it's a whole new process, so.
And that pack, that packet that I gave you when I walked out, I think it's on page one oh three, sixty days. I think it's on page one oh three of that package I gave you. I think it's sixty days. Timeline for action on open town meeting petitions, sixty days.
State your name and.
Uh, Ben, foot in an OCP trail. Uh, all I've heard today was complain, 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 complain. Budget's too high, this is too high. We get something in town, three thousand people show up. Yeah, I understand, it's a lot of people. Benefits the town, offset mill rates, taxes. But then they complain. It's too much, too much, too much. What are the solutions to fix the budget issues? I don't know, everyone just bitches. It's, it's getting real annoying.
Well, when we start compiling all of our information for the budget season, it's open to, for public to come and watch, listen, give opinion, right, while we're doing it.
It's, it's open, it's an op, it's not a open forum. They can watch.
They can see what we're doing, right. But they can talk when we're done. I mean, we don't give open, uh, public comment while we're doing it, but it's certainly an open process.
Yeah. My opinion is, everyone on the outside's looking at these meetings. They're listening to everyone complain. It sends the message that we don't want you here. So, again, we need to attract things in town to offset budgets, to make money for the businesses. But yet, no, that's all they hear. Complain, complain, complain. We don't want anything. Nothing changes that way.
I mean.
It's not nineteen sixty-eight anymore.
We would love businesses in town. It's hard for us because our town is not sewer-based and not water-based. And, and so when you get these big facilities or something, it, it's, you know, they're required to be sprinkled. It's, it's just a lot of money. So that's why the little town of Leamington doesn't have big business, which I don't think, for the most part, I don't think most of the people want big corporate business here. I personally live here. I don't want to see it either, okay? But I do would like to see business. That the local home business, it helps to the tax bracket of the people and it, it funds and helps the people. And I would go to a, like the shop that's being proposed down there, the nursery, you know, it's, it's by local people, for local people, and you're keeping the money in town. We're all for business and, and I hope we can get some, but there's a lot of obstacles. You know, I mean, how would we approach the people of the town saying, we need to strike our aquifer down here and put in town-supplied water? I mean, can we? Can we support that? I mean, it, it's, these are all questions that are gonna be twenty, thirty years down the road that I'm not gonna be sitting here trying to answer, but there's a lot to it. It's not, it's not simple science. We, we, you know, I just speak for myself. I do the best that I can, you know? I just, I've never been into this stuff. I've run businesses for fifteen, twenty years and I just, I come here with trying to understand that we, we can't make a profit. The town's not here to make a profit, but you also gotta have enough money to support a, a, and stabilize and run the town. And, and as cost of living goes up, it goes up for me, it goes up for all of you. But at the same time, all of our buy, everything we buy has gone up. You know, what we bought for cutting edges for the plows last year went up thirty-three percent because the steel went up. I mean, it's hard to, we can cut the budget and cap it, but I think the end result is gonna be meeting after meeting after meeting, or it's gonna be a disservice to the people of the town because we're not gonna be able to do the function that we really need to do for what you guys expect. So, I mean, I'm willing to discuss whatever the board wants to do with, with, with that motion going forward. So, I mean, if they want to put it through as the board, great, and if they don't, that, that's great too, but.
I believe that's a taxpayer's decision.
It is, and the. It is, and the result, it goes to the taxpayers, so they'll either say, they'll either back the people, or they'll, or they'll vote no. I mean, I, I really wish we had more than eighty-five people show up at town meeting to vote for this town. It, it, I sat here last year, looked out, and there was eighty-five people, a town of forty-one hundred. I think there is, what, twenty, twenty-one hundred registered voters, twenty...
I think so.
Twenty-one or twenty-two hundred registered voters, and eighty-five showed up to vote our budget in. That, that just seems hideous. Joyce, sorry.
I'm glad I had the opportunity to sit. I noticed that John was a bit anxious, a little irate, and I was irate when I heard you say that the planning board just passes stuff off, and then they pass it back, and then who knows what happens? You know perfectly well what happens, and you know how long it takes to get a referendum forth for this town. So number one, that's me speaking as chair of the planning board. Number two, I'm gonna speak, if I may, as a private citizen. I think you guys are doing a great job. I think that this whole, um, airport event we had when I was there for about an hour and a half, it went off very well. I did not see anyone on, on the runway. I hope they do it again. I'm going to say something that's not going to be very kind right now, but I guess my temper, which I sometimes have a difficult time controlling, this is a very nimby situation. These people, except for John, I never see them at town meeting. I never, I don't know whether they come and vote for referendum questions or not. I'm sure they'll be voting on the referendum questions that we're putting together for March, but I have little empathy and little understanding, empathy, for arguments when it's a nimby situation. We should be caring about the town as a whole and what is, for the benefit of the townspeople. Now, to have two thousand plus or whatever they were, obviously a lot of people were from away, but I also know that quite a few people that I know went there and really enjoyed it, and I, like you, I was glad to see the children there. But I really don't like sitting in my house watching this meeting and hearing people chastise local government when they don't participate. You can vote against me if you want, which you'll have the right to do in another year or two. I probably will run again just because I'm stubborn enough to do it, but, um, I'm willing not, I'm not happy with just sitting and listening and not saying what I think is an individual, so thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yes.
I have a question regarding, in fact, it's been on my mind, and you brought it up very recently, about, uh, other sources of income.
Jack, what's your address again?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Jack Partridge at thirteen Evergreen in beautiful Limington. Something like a, a light industrial park would be a great income source, but I think you've mentioned about a limitation being sewage perhaps, um, but would it be, is there consensus on if having, in the last time I lived in Manchester, New Hampshire, the city owned it, and it was quite a, a collection of small businesses with perhaps two to whatever, ten employees? Something like a plumber would go to, to park his equipment or have a shop, or electricians. It could be a strip mall kind of a thing, or, or several rows of strip malls kind of things. It could be on the, on a scale of several acres. Don't know if that would be a town-owned thing or encourage a, a developer to do that, but in any case, the tax base would be increased. Is there a consensus against that besides the sewage issue?
If I can bring it up, we tried to do that down the street, but there's water under that land.
The aquifer, well, yeah, where they're, yeah.
Oh, is open, open water or wet, wet land you mean?
Yeah. And then the other thing is, where are we gonna find property in our town to put an industrial park to satisfy everybody? I'm in the same boat with her.
You'd wanna be on...
So I'm a little angry with some people around here.
Yeah, on Route twenty-five, it may, I don't know.
Where?
I, I don't know the area well enough, I'm sorry about that, but...
Well, I mean, going forward, we're actually...
And where are we gonna get the property, and are you gonna fund it as citizens to buy the property for the town?
Yeah.
We didn't, I, I never got to mention, but I'll bring up what we discussed this afternoon, literally an hour ago. So Matt was inquiring what it would take for a town-owned solar farm somewheres, where the benefits reek to the town.
Right.
So he's gonna be investigating how much it would benefit the town, whether it be, you know, is it, we're gonna spend two hundred grand to make twenty, or, I mean, over long call, are we gonna get fifty, sixty, eighty thousand a year? I mean, so it's something that he's gonna look into to see if we can't, you know, spark more intake for the town. It's not that we don't try. I mean, we, we're always brainstorming ideas on getting more funds to offset the tax base. Trust me, I know there's a lot of people, being on the Fire and EMS, um, I respond to a lot of calls, especially assists with rescue, and I see the houses and, and the people, and it's hard. It really is. I understand, you know, 'cause I didn't come from much when we were younger, so...
Right, right.
I side with them. It's a lot of, um, it's a lot of money, the tax base, when, when they're giving up their medicines to pay their, their, their rent or their tax bill, that's a problem. I agree a hundred percent, and I wish I had the answer, 'cause I'd like to help everybody, truly. I really would.
So then, if a, if a wrinkle just mentioned that there's a, a, a shortage of land for this, or a developer, a, a developer would invest in this land, and then perhaps he would have a moratorium, a partial moratorium on his real estate taxes for the first year or so, perhaps, because those things cost you less, uh, in far as output, you know, don't have kids going to school in those, in those areas?
But then we'll have, like, sorry.
Nope.
Then we'll have arguments that we're not collecting money for the town if we're giving people free rides.
No, I understand what you're saying, if you give them a moratorium, right.
This is gonna be a...
And again, we tried it down the street, like, that land's been sitting empty for almost two years, right?
Well, there was, there's considering circumstances where that, that land was cleared and it, and it was a D E P violation.
Yeah.
That they're working through, so the, the, the Amish folks are gonna do a great thing with that.
Right.
I think going forward, and I'm excited for that. So, but I, I, I see what you're saying, and listen.
Spending money that the town was...
You have ideas, or anybody has ideas on how we can try to go forward, absolutely. Email them, send them, Matt, myself, I'm open to anything that we can investigate, truly.
If, if in principle you agree to do something like this at no cost to the town, without having town paying for it, or issue a warrant, if you, you wanna take a risk, that's a risk, of course, but encouraging a developer and maybe an incentive of, of a sort to get a developer.
Yeah, and I think the, the big problem is...
Well, we have to look, we have to own land to be able to do that, and most, most of the time, these businesses are going to open up because someone wanted to buy land and a developer wanted to, uh, I mean, someone wanted to sell their land, and a developer wanted to buy it. And then they would go through the planning board process of trying to put a business in and doing what, what they need to do, but it all starts with someone wanting to sell their land. And then what they do with it after the fact is...
And the cost of land.
You know, how, how are we gonna tell people to sell their land only to put a business on it and not, you know, other, other uses that people come up with for their property?
The, the cost of land too, I mean, when I bought my land five years ago here, I bought thirty-five acres on twenty-five in Limington for sixty-five thousand dollars. You can't buy a three-acre house lot for that now. It, it, yeah, I mean, a base three-acre house lot, you're paying eighty grand for, easily. So with the cost of going up, just, that's kinda why there's a number, on twenty-five and standard, prime example, that big field, the cost to buy that field and the amount to jump through hoops to put stuff in there and a road, the developers are walking away 'cause they're, it's a losing battle when you wanna put a...
It's up for sale again, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, 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 'cause they look at it, and then you've gotta spend this, you gotta do this, you gotta all code, everything just has gone through the roof to build nowadays. It's, it's hard. You know, I think out here, we need to spend a little more time, I think somebody's brought up the fact of maybe, uh, expanding the industrial area a little bit from where it's at to try to gain more for maybe helping people that want, may wanna come in. I mean, I don't wanna see big box stores, I, I don't know what, I'm, I'm speaking personally here. I don't wanna see a Walmart, you know, I don't wanna see a big box store in this town because I don't think you folks really want that. Maybe you do, then, but I would like to see business, you know? That tractor supply that, that got refused in standard and went over the line in Gorm, I would have loved to have talked to them before they went there, 'cause I would have opened on them here, because that, it's not, it's corporate, I know, but it's little. It's small, and I think it would be a great investment to the, the community, stuff like that. And, and it's gonna improve tax base. You see what I'm saying? So it's, it, it's gonna help the people.
That kind of thing, if you can expand the tax base, but without increasing the outlay too much, you know, as in, uh, people living there, you don't...
You're not putting the burden on, on kids in the school system.
Exactly.
And, and, I mean, it, I, I totally get it.
Yep.
That's why fifty-five-plus communities are pretty popular, because now, now you ain't increasing the, the MSAD six, you know? Yeah, you get a little increase on the, on the Fire and EMS side for stuff like that, but it's, it's, I mean, there's a lot, that's the popularity lately.
Okay.
But we're open to any ideas at any point in time.
I'll be looking into that industrial area you have.
Yeah.
It's gonna be at the airport.
I think the airport is the start of it, isn't it?
Just kidding.
That was what was proposed, but it didn't really...
Because they voted against it.
Sorry, yeah.
I just broke all of this, how do you like that? Okay.
It was where the Teterman Farm is?
Yes.
And the gentleman who owns it, that was going to put the, um, camping site down there, uh, he wanted to zone the area business, but you can't do spot zoning, and he never followed through with getting the signatures to change the required area that it would have taken from, at least from the airport all the way down to the, to the town line to be, to, to be rezoned on both sides of the road. And there was some negative comment about it, but it never did get to a town vote.
Are they selling?
I heard, I heard that they, that, that place is for sale, yes.
They gave up on doing a new business in town because of zoning.
I'm not surprised, we all thought that would happen.
It's hard to get new businesses in here if we're not able to bend past what we'd like. So we just lost another business and a, a huge property for sale, so...
Anybody else? No? Okay?
Sorry, I'm normally quiet, but...
No, you, you took a week off and had rest and relaxation.
I actually did not go to the event, I left town. I did not wanna be near it at all, so...
You took a vacation.
Yeah. I went to another fair.
You went to other?
I went and spent my money somewhere else.
Nice guy.
Big crowds and vendors. Would you care to take us home with this?
I might sell my property.
It's, we can't put a business on it, maybe.
I'll put a small Walmart there.
Yeah.
All right, notifications, are we done?
Yes.
Thanks, guys. Uh, select board hours are Thursday, two PM to eight PM. The on-air meeting time is Thursday at seven PM. Transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine AM to four PM, and Wednesday, twelve to four. A station, a transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle windshield for all disposal, for the disposable all items. Transfer station stickers are available at the town office for twenty dollars, no sticker is required to use the swap shop. The transfer station does not accept brush, yard clippings, and hazardous waste. Riverside recycling in Portland takes hazardous waste. General assistance applications are available at the town office during normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and must be assigned and returned to the G A administrator, administrator or town clerk. Planning board meets at the municipal complex of First and Third Monday evenings of the month at seven PM.
I got one more thing.
Oh, boy.
Um, no, this weekend, the, uh, Saturday from, I believe it's eleven to two, is